So, welcome to the Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education Meeting, April 30th of 2020. And I please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so upcoming events. On April or May 11th, there will be a virtual public hearing on the Code of Conduct at 6:00 PM. The way this will run, it will be similar to the way we're doing our public participation. That you, we ask you to send in your questions. The end of the business day of the day before. And we will try to answer those questions, or administration will answer those questions after they present the Code of Conduct and changes. Then on May 14th, there will be a virtual Board of Ed meeting at 7:00 PM. Okay, we do not have any agenda modifications. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. So move Mike.
Second.
Second.
Carl.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike, a second by Carl to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstention? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 We have a unanimous approval of the agenda. And on to Pride and Rachel.
Alrighty, hi, everybody. I just want to say I'm really glad to be back and see you all again. So, since we're not physically in the school right now, I decided to do something a little different for Pride. And I actually want to talk about what a lot of the students at FDR have been feeling during this quarantine. So from the first day of school was canceled, a lot of us were shocked. And I was actually with a friend working on some homework. And it's just so strange to think back now at how times have changed within two months. And very quickly, all of the students realized that this would be the first crisis that we've ever been through. The constant exposure to unfamiliar and unknown situations has brought new anxieties for many of us. And the chaos and fear aroused internationally is something that we will never forget. Many students are longing to be back in their classrooms. They miss their peers and their teachers. They kind of feel a little disconnected from the school and sometimes overwhelmed with online learning. But we understand that it's necessary. And it's really, we're really lucky that we're able to utilize something like this during this time. Right now, the seniors are struggling though. They feel upset that it's possible that we won't be able to finish out our 12 to 13 years of schooling in traditional ways. Um, we're not really ready to leave our teachers without getting a real chance to say goodbye. And we're not ready to go separate ways from friends that we don't even get to finish the year out with. Kind of feels surreal to think that the last time we were in the school might possibly be the last time we were students there, so. Um, I know that Sources of Strength though has been really active throughout this time. And they held a virtual thank you note campaign in April. It was for the essential workers and they gathered over 100 thank you notes. And that's just, they dedicated it to them. That's really amazing to see the community come together like that. And there's a new campaign for May now. It's called Physically Distanced, Socially Connected. And it reflects on how Sources of Strength has been helping during these times. Also, the Interact Club has started a "What Are You Grateful For?" campaign. Asking members of the FDR community to submit one thing they have realized they appreciate during these times. And the goal is to spread positivity and create a slideshow of good for the school. I think for the most part that we're all just waiting to see what's up next with the rest of our school year. And until something is solidified, we're just living day by day and kind of hoping for the best, you know?
Thank you, Rachel. Is there any other Pride?
Uh, yes. Hi, everyone. It's Greer Rycheck. Rachel, that was amazing. I can't tell you how, how wonderful it is to hear a student voice. And for those of us who are here on the Hangout, it's just incredible to see your face. Uh, our, our hearts are with all of our students. Uh, and again, most especially our seniors. Um, we're really thanking them you all the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I did have a couple. The US News and World Report has its annual high school rankings. And we are very pleased to announce that the FDR High School is in the 31% in the nation. And in the 35% in New York State. This is the first time FDR High School in probably many, many years has made the ranking list. We are very proud of this ranking. We are going to, you, you have to join, become a member to be able to use the designation badge. Because that helps pay for the research and the data that goes into it. And while some people praise the US News and World Report, we also know that some people don't. But right now, we're going to celebrate the data that's there. And we will subscribe so that we will be able to use the badge in our advertisement and on our website about our ranking in this report. So congratulations to FDR High School. This is great to get a piece of good news. There is, there was a video put together by the Town of Hyde Park. I don't think, I don't know, Jay, were we able to link it or no?
So we still can't hear you, Jay? Can you shake your head no or yes?
No.
No.
Okay, well, um, so at any rate, if the easiest way to get to the video is to go to the Town of Hyde Park Recreation Department. Uh, I know that Teresa Gasparini. My understanding is she spearheaded the project. I sent in a video, I was asked and did send in a video on behalf of the Hyde Park Central School District. But the fire department's in the video, the police, the town supervisor, many community members. It's both heartwarming as well as just a message of support. And so it's an entire Hyde Park community video. We were also joined by Congressman Antonio Delgado, Sussarino, Mark Molinaro. So again, if you have a chance to see the Town of Hyde Park video, please do so. The easiest way to go see the video is to go to the Town of Hyde Park Recreation Department. I know that the chamber also had it posted and they also have a prominent spot in the video. So I really encourage everyone in our school district to take some time to, to look at this video. And last but not least, you know, we're still very much pleased with our food service, our tech and our facilities department. We've given them several shout outs. And tonight I'd just really like to give a shout out to, to the teaching staff who overnight reinvented classroom instruction. And all of the support staff that, that works with the teachers as well. So it's just been amazing, this transformation and the, the level of collaboration between the districts and the teachers has been absolutely amazing. So I just, I just want to say thank you. And that's all I have for Pride.
Hey, anybody else?
I'd like to jump in and say that I really liked that video. I watched that video too. And it was really great to see so many people from the community. You know, including you, Greer. I mean, it was, it was really a great video, so I'll just second that. If anybody gets a chance, they should look at it because it's really nicely done.
Hey, anyone more?
Oh, well, I will just add that, um, you know, the, the shout out to seniors that has been occurring on Twitter through the athletic department is absolutely amazing. I've started just writing congratulations for each new one that pops up. So if you're a Twitter user, it's another way of seeing the seniors and, and recognizing them. And so we're, we're getting to see a lot of where people are going and they include a photo. So that, that's been wonderful to see.
Okay, so.
And I think, and I think they're doing some sort of sign for your front or something like that. I saw that campaign come through where you could buy signs and either stick them in your front yard or put them on a seniors yard.
Yeah, I think we're gonna see that real soon.
Well, I bought a bunch of signs, so hopefully it's, you know, it's already happening.
I, um, I also saw something. I was sent this by one of the other students in my grade. And I, some radio station, I forget what it is, but they're trying to collect, um, what college all the seniors in the school districts around here are going to. And they're going to then announce every single one of them, like a little, I guess, like a little graduation thing. They're gonna be like, oh, this person's going to this college, congratulation, um, some morning. I'm not sure. I didn't get all the details. But I think that's really interesting too, so.
Oh, that sounds nice. Okay, we're gonna move on to Superintendent's.
Okay, I have a few items. First, Governor Cuomo will be announcing tomorrow at his 11 o'clock press conference of what, what, what the school closure, the fate of school closure. So, uh, tune in tomorrow to hear Governor Cuomo on that topic. We were notified that Healthy Kids, who is our designated provider for, childcare provider for essential workers. They now have a grant that essential workers who are income eligible can apply to have free childcare that is posted on our website under the childcare portion. So that was good news. Again, if you're an essential worker and you are income eligible, you can fill out the application and hopefully get some relief on childcare costs. Aviva's gonna give a little update on our grading and continuity of learning plan?
Yes, um, we have a grading plan for the fourth quarter that we've worked on with teachers and administrators. We will be sharing it with teachers early next week, getting feedback, you know, fine tuning that. And then hopefully the final, the following week, sending information out to parents about how we're gonna be assigning grades for the fourth quarter. So that should be coming very soon.
Thank you, Aviva. And last but not least, we as a district in Hyde Park are members of the Lower Hudson Education Coalition. And this is a joint, uh, uh, membership with the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, the Rockland County School Boards Association, the Dutchess School Boards Association, and the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents. So that's the whole partnership. Again, we are members. Our Duchess representative is Superintendent Mark Valenti from Spack and Kill. So on behalf of all of the districts who are members of the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, I'd like to read a letter that has been sent to Senator Schumer and Gillibrand, as well as the New York State Congressional Delegation. So this is an advocacy letter for funding. And as members, it comes from all of us. So it says, "To the Senators and the Congressional Delegation, as educational leaders in your community and on behalf of the school boards, superintendents, parents and students of Douglas, Putnam, Rockland and Westchester Counties, we are collectively asking for you to provide critically needed funding to maintain and support educational opportunities of students across New York State. While we appreciate the public education aid that was provided through the CARES Act, unfortunately, this funding falls far short. Current projections by the New York State Division of Budget clearly demonstrate that additional funding directed at New York State Public Education is desperately needed to support K-12 public schools. The current fiscal situation in New York State has the potential to be devastating for public education. State revenues are projected to decline by $13 billion or more. With school aid being fifteen of 26% of the New York State budget, potential cuts of 20% for the coming year would result in a loss of $5.5 billion to our school. While districts have incurred a myriad of unplanned expenses in working to establish distance learning for our students, provide meals to low-income families and childcare to the families of healthcare workers and first responders. We expect to see additional costs for cleaning and disinfecting school buildings and maintaining health protocols in the coming years. Most critically, school districts will continue to be at the forefront of ensuring students' mental health and academic needs are met when we are able to return to our school buildings. In line with the recommendations of the New York State Educational Conference Board, we request $200 billion in funding targeted at public schools with a strong maintenance of effort requirement for states to ensure that the incremental federal aid is distributed to help schools pay for these added expenses. The COVID-19 crisis and subsequent economic collapse threatens the ability of public schools to provide education, social emotional supports and a healthy, safe school environment for the almost 240,000 students in our region. The public schools of New York State need your support as we work to meet the needs of students and help our communities recover in the coming years. And it's signed by the Chair of the Lower Hudson Education Coalition Steering Committee, Kelly Lappin. So, uh, we're proud to be members of this organization. And we thank the Executive Committee for putting together this very important letter to, to our elected officials. And that is the end of the Superintendent's report.
Sorry, I had myself muted. Okay, we're gonna go next to the Capitol Project from Director of Facilities Elliot Sheldon. And Elliot, can you share who's also on, on this call?
Yes, this evening we have Zach Malison and Dan Woodside from CS Arch, and Tom Chaster and Lou Rodriguez from the Palumbo Group. Uh, I'm gonna let Dan from CS Arch start the presentation tonight. You there, Dan?
Hi, this is Dan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I have myself muted. I had to figure out how to get off that as well. Good evening. Uh, yes, I can start Elliot. I think Lou should probably jump in on most of this if he's there. But one of the challenges we left with last time as well from meeting with you as the board was taking a look at the, the stairs at FDR. There's some conversation on the stairs about trying to find a way to incorporate more masonry or brick. So we have done that and I believe those have been shared with the board members, those sketches. Is that true?
Uh, we haven't shared them yet, but we will.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, what we did, we have two options. One is a, is an option to use the exterior insulation finish system like we talked about last time. And one is a hybrid version which uses brick masonry, probably over 60 to 70% of the, of the elevation of the building. And then we use the EPIS, as we call it, material as an infill panel, but only in the high parts of the stair towers. It does not come down to within eight feet of the ground. We do think that's gonna be a more expensive solution, but we've got that in front of Tom and Lou from Palumbo now for them to price out both options. Uh, again, I will just emphasize that the EPIS option does come with a reinforcing mesh behind the EPIS for additional impact resistance. So once we have the, the quantities and the dollar values behind those, we'll be ready to share those with the board again and make a decision on how best to move forward and work that into a redesign as we, as we move forward. The bigger part of this, and Lou, please jump in when you're ready here. We have, we have been meeting as a group, as a team, and also with district administration over the past several weeks since we have last met with you. We were trying to cut, you know, significant amount of money out of the project to then put the, put FDR back out to bid. In our work to do that, we don't feel like we have picked up enough money in some of the scope reductions. So what we need to do now is take a deeper dive into the mechanical system and look at redesigning the mechanical system potentially for the science pods. The way we have to do that is to first look at it from an engineering perspective, what we feel comfortable with, not only in best practice, but certainly what's gonna meet code. And then we have to review that with the State Education Department. And we started that conversation with the State Education Department to try to make those changes from essentially a rooftop system in certain areas, rooftop mechanical system, to a hybrid of rooftop mechanical systems for the, for the intensive lab areas and a unit ventilator system, which basically is a similar to what you'd see now in many of your classrooms. Essentially a console that sits on the floor in front of your windows that delivers air, exchanges air in and out of the room. So that redesign and the time it's going to take that redesign, to do that redesign and, and cut additional, look for additional value in the project is causing us to come back to you, make a recommendation that we really feel that we need to pull back and recommend that we go back out to bid in the late summer or fall. I'll leave it there. Either ask questions or let Lou to fill, fill in the gaps or Tom fill in the gaps and then we can entertain questions.
Well, this is Perry Sheldon. I'll just comment, you know, I'm happy to hear that we're coming up with an alternate solution just to a straight EPIS for the stairwell. You know, I think that it will serve the district better and longer for, for, for many more years. You know, as for the mechanical redesign, you know, it's unfortunate. So, so what are you thinking from a timeline? Cause I, you know, I understood that we were gonna try to get out quickly, you know, get back out on the street quickly with a, with a bid package. What kind of a timeline are you looking at now? Are you anticipating a, a long? You know, is this something that's gonna have to be reviewed by SED again? Or you're thinking that it's just gonna be a, be able to walk it through with them?
We will have to review it with SED again, but we would do it by addendum to the project and not get back in line. Uh, and we will have already had conversations with them about the approach we're going to take. So we wouldn't see this as a long exhaustive review on the mechanical system once we have approval on the approach. We do feel that the, the redesign alone is going to take probably eight to 10 weeks to get done. There's, it's pretty, it's a pretty complicated system right now. And, and to put that time into the redesign of not only that area, but also looking at the other areas of FDR and where we can improve on our value in those areas as well may require some redesign as well. So all told, not just the pods, we feel like it's an eight to 10 week process. So that's why we are recommending, you know, we're looking at probably late summer, early fall to get out to bid, which is. uh, early fall to get out to bid, which is, you know, there's gonna be a benefit to bidding at that time anyway, uh, versus trying to now squeeze something in to start something over this summer, uh, with the exception of maybe some, some demolition work. Um, but, you know, we, we're gonna get much better numbers in our opinion, and I believe in Plumbos' opinion as well, if we can pull back and, and, uh, make this happen again in the late summer, early fall. I guess we feel like Perry, that the biggest thing is we got one shot at this, go back out again and get it right. Uh, we really wanna put the district in the best situation and best position to do that. So, uh, that's why we don't feel rushing it right now. It really makes, makes much sense.
Okay, so that'll put us in a bid cycle so that we'd be looking at construction starting spring, summer of twenty-one, correct?
Yeah, the good thing is we would have, you know, there'd be plenty of time to get
Yeah.
product ordered, uh, submittals reviewed, all of that, so that wouldn't be a rush either. We wouldn't have lead time issues.
Okay.
Hey, uh, I have a quick question. This may sound stupid, but what is EFS? We say that we're switching from the blast to EFS. What, can you explain what that is?
Sorry, that's, uh, I never know about these architectural acronyms. Uh, exterior insulation finish system is the, is, is what it is, what the acronym stands for. Essentially what it is, is STUCO, but it's, uh, if you can imagine STUCO that you see on a smooth kind of finish that you see on buildings all over the South and, and in the North in this climate as well, primarily in the South, but it's a synthetic STUCO material that's been around for years. Uh, they definitely have improved the process over the years. There used to be an issue with the material not draining properly and, and causing problems, but, uh, they've, they've really advanced that, and we've used this pretty extensively on projects. Um, but primarily in areas that are out of reach. Um, you know, I still feel that the way we're specifying this material and the rigid quality of it is, uh, is a much higher level, and you wouldn't have the issues that we're anticipating, uh, that you might have in the back of this building. I don't believe you would, and I think you'd save the most money by doing this, but there's no doubt a masonry solution, if we can afford it, is going to give you the longest-term, uh, best product for that building, so. Uh, but I would still, uh, recommend that, that you look at a way to put this material up high. If we go to entire masonry on the backside of the building, I'm not, I'm very confident we're probably not gonna be saving anything over our curtain wall system that we originally had designed, so we do need to find some savings here. So, sorry, long answer to your question, but it's essentially a synthetic STUCO material.
Okay, you said primarily in the South, but it's used in our climate as well? That's fine.
It's used all over. It's used all over the country now, yeah. Oh, yeah. And I can, I can share photographs with you of projects we've done that, where we've completed. It's been in place for ten years, fifteen years, and no problems at all.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. I have the sense that Tom and Lou are muted.
Hey, guys. I'm sorry, yeah, we, we are muted. Just trying to figure this thing out. Um, just to back up the, uh, the EFS approach, there, there's a project locally that we are, um, putting in EFS, it's, uh, over at Germantown. We're, uh, in it, and like Dan said, on a, on a higher side. Um, uh, and it's over, there's an auditorium project that we're doing there. It's an auditorium addition. And, uh, the reinforced, it's a reinforced fiberglass mesh that's, uh, behind the product, behind the, uh, the scratch coat. So, it's, um, you know, it's a, it's, it's a good approach. Um, it, you know, we have it high, it will, uh, take abuse. Um, and again, the reason we brought this, uh, option to the table is because specifically at the stair towers, the curtain wall approach, um, had a high value. We were trying, you know, uh, to the best we can, uh, be cost-effective there. There's only, when you look at the, um, the stairwells, there's only really twenty-four hundred square feet of surface area. Um, and during bid day, we were getting, uh, close to a million dollars on the curtain wall side on, on that, and that's, that's a significant number. So, we're just, uh, looking at ways to, to, to bring those, and those are, you know, that's life safety. Uh, those stair, they're, they're required, so we wanna, we wanna get those numbers back down, and, and just going to a simple build is gonna definitely, uh, bring those, bring those numbers back down. So, that's the, uh, the first part of it. The, the big picture here, just so the board understands, when we look at the pods as a bid, and we looked at the rest of the building as a bid, really what we're looking to do is say, how can we, how can we get a good, solid uh, million dollars out of the pod renovation and the classroom renovations that were associated with it? Um, there was, uh, seven or eight classrooms being, existing science rooms that were being converted to regular classrooms. We're really trying to take that bid. How do we get that? And, and get a million dollars out of that? We were, we were four million dollars, you know, to the bad. Um, so, this first big hit is, is really just, uh, looking to dissect. Um, right off the bat, we know that, uh, we were gonna get a, a two hundred thousand dollar deduct going from terrazzo to vinyl tile in the corridors. So, there's two hundred there. At the, the stairwell additions, we were looking to get another, potentially another two to three hundred thousand. If we can, between those two, we have a half a million, and then we were looking at the, um, the HVAC component. When you look at the square footage that, of, of work that we're doing, we, the dollar per square foot, we were close to ninety dollars a foot at the, um, at the addition, or at, at the pods and the classroom. So, we're really attacking that and really trying to figure out a, uh, uh, an approach that's good for the district, but also, uh, you know, good on, on the dollar and cent side. And if we can get, um, if we can reduce that ninety dollars a foot by twenty dollars, the pods alone are thirty thousand square feet, so if we were able to get that down by twenty dollars a foot, that's a six hundred thousand dollar savings, plus the four or five hundred thousand, we're at like one, one point one million. Um, then, we could really, and then, and then, and now, after that, now we look at the rest of the building. So, it's, like Dan said, this is not an easy thing. We wanna, uh, going back out to bid, we wanna get this right. We don't wanna, uh, be doing this two or three times, so. And, and Tom's on the line as well. I just don't know if he knows.
I'm unmuted now.
Oh, you are?
I figured it out.
Okay. If you have anything else to add, Tom, go ahead.
I, I was talking a lot, but apparently nobody is hearing me. Sorry. I'm like, my phone's unmuted. I don't get it. So, anyway. Uh, so, we're actually, we're even looking at, you know, not just mechanics, we're looking at anywhere, architecturally, um, anything where we can bring more value. Um, and the existing building, we can break up into areas, and by bringing value, these big dollar value items that'll allow us to do more, you know, throughout the existing building. And, and obviously, that's the goal, so. Um, I, I think this is the right approach to get as much value as we can and, and hit it once. Um, but if we were to bid late summer, early fall, we would probably still get started late in the fall, uh, with some of the work, but it would take us, you know, we'd still have to get materials and, um, some middles done and whatnot, like Dan was saying earlier, but I think we could get started.
Uh, this is Perry again. One more question. I mean, do, do you anticipate, or, you know, could you see, um, I mean, this project, in my mind, has always been a renovation of the pods. And, and I think it, you know, whether the original scope was, or whether it, it grew, it kind of, um, went further into the existing building more than what I had envisioned, but it may have been, you know, my misconception. Um, do you see that one, that a solution might be that we pull, again, pull our focus back to be on the pods primarily and less work within the existing building? And, and not to say that we don't need to do the work within the existing building, but it may be that, you know, the pod project has to be the pod project, and work within the existing building may have to be another project in the future. Is that, uh, has that been discussed, or what are thoughts on that?
So, so that's exactly kind of the way we're headed. We're focusing the attention on the pods and the program space and attacking the rest of the building, um, in, I say, pieces and parts. Like, uh, broken down into probably two, maybe three components, so that if there's dollars, we can say, okay, we're gonna do this part of the building, or we're gonna do that part of the building. Um, and that's, that's kind of how we're looking at it right now.
Are you thinking that that would be, um, that these might be alternates that would be bid? Or would it be decision, okay, all right, or, or decisions made during the estimating, uh, time?
No, we would, we would break it up into sections and call it, you know, alternate one, alternate two, alternate three, and whatever they may be, and then we'll have the dollars associated with those alternates on bid day. And if the money is there, we're able to, you know, do more potentially than if we just put it out with no alternates.
Okay.
Yeah, and Perry, just to add, yeah, when we originally came up with the plan for the, uh, for the high school, there were specific zones that were created. It was A through F, maybe, and
Yeah, F or G, yeah, something like that.
So, what's, what's good about that is that we can define specific zones that we can put out as alternates, uh, for this project. You know, the administrative wing is a zone, uh, the auditorium is a zone, the, uh, the cafeteria is a zone, the gym is a zone. Um, the, and then there's multiple, um, wings associated to program that are zones. So, it's, it's easier, because we set it up that way, it's easy for us to, uh, create these alts, um, to see what we can afford.
Okay.
Okay, this is Doug Heater. Um, part of the reason work was being done in the other parts of the high school was the concern that, uh, the pods would have, uh, nice, uh, controls for heat, and, and, uh, they would be, they would be comfortable, and the rest of the school would be what it is today, which is you can't turn on or off the heat, you can't change things, uh, the staff is gonna be unhappy if the pods are up to snuff and the rest of the school, where most of the other teachers are, are, is not. So, um, I, if, if the T part, whatever phase that is, can all, can make it into its, at least, um, equitable heating and cooling and controls, um, I would like to see that happen.
Yeah, but ultimately, we would like to, the pods is the number one thing. And we do, like, the money.
Well, I, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, you're, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a staff that's gonna say, what are we, you know? How come we don't get anything?
I, I think what's also important here, the dialogue, uh, always needs to go back to the beginning. Um, there, there was a choice to spend extra money at, uh, at North Park, and I think it's a good, it was a good choice, but we were, you know, we spent an extra million dollars there. When you look at the four million dollars, it's over budget. We spent an extra million at North Park to get, uh, to really create a system that was, uh, acceptable. Um, so, there was that first choice. The second choice was, you know, we're doing the same thing at Havlin. Havlin, you know, the infrastructure on the electrical side could not support the, um, the, uh, the new HVAC, so we're, we're spending extra money there. So, when you look at the project, we're saying four million over budget, but we've already made significant decisions that were, there's one point eight million dollars associated to North Park in Havlin that we've, we've said, hey, now we, we know we're gonna make this call. Um, and that does take away from FDR. I just, I just wanna make sure there's a constant dialogue that brings us back to the beginning. Um, and there were, there were choices made. Um, and that's, uh, it's just, it's, it's important to keep that in, in play, so.
So, any other questions?
Um, before, uh, before we say goodbye, if there are no other questions, I think, I think it'll be on the next meeting. While we have, uh, the CS Arch people here, I would like to thank them for their donation. Um, CS Arch made a donation that will go to, uh, offsetting the cost of getting some of our families hooked up with connectivity, um, with Wi-Fi's that did not have it. So, thank you, Dan. Thank you, CS Arch. And thank you, Plumbos and CS Arch for keeping us going, and I'm just really trying to bring this project together. If we go back even further to, you know, kind of lose, uh, thing that, that things have changed and moved, our ultimate goal was to do the HVAC in all of our schools. Um, that had to be pared down. I think there's a commitment from the district to move forward with HVAC in all of our buildings. And if, if, you know, and we've, we've had to adjust our timeline, um, but we do wanna keep on the docket that, you know, when we started this project, we wanted to take all of our schools HVAC, and we'll just keep chipping away at it. We owe it to our community to have our, the, uh, the air quality and flow in our buildings boost of learning, so we just, we just need to keep moving forward. Um, and this is hard work. Uh, times change. It's two years since, uh, minimally two years since we started this project, and things change, and we move forward. So, uh, thank you, everybody.
Well, this is Perry again. Greer, I mean, that, that's a good point. I mean, we've, we've talked about, you know, the HVAC, you know, going back beyond the, the detail that we've, we've been talking about in this project. We were looking at HVAC as being the priority, and I think, so, so my question is, has our priority shift, or is in some way the renovation of the pods come into that? You know, is, is there a, um, I mean, because quite frankly, I don't know that we can do both. I don't know that we can do all of the HVAC in the high school and do all the renovation of the pods with the funds that we have available. So, is there a decision there that we need to make? That it's either we focus on HVAC building-wide, or is it that we focus on renovating the pods and then do as much HVAC as we can?
Yeah, my understanding is that the nature of what we need to do with the science labs in the pods, we have to make the commitment to the science labs and the pods, do as much HVAC as we can now, and then whatever we don't get to, we lump in with the next project and say, okay, we need to finish FDR, and maybe we'll add two more schools. Um, uh, I know that's maybe not ideal, but that, that is how we're looking at now. Um.
Greer, this is Dan, and I, yeah, I, I just wanna go back to, to what I remember us doing during planning when we were in pre-ref. And the keys were, you know, North Park had to get done, and Havlin had to get finished in terms of the mechanical work because it wasn't finished previously. So, let's finish the mechanical work at Havlin, and let's make sure we tackle science spaces at Havlin and the high school. And, you know, whatever additional HVAC we can get done is a high priority at FDR. But that, those, those priorities, as I just described them, were what I recalled the hierarchy as we went through the entire project.
Yeah, so did I. That's a good point.
Okay, I only bring it up so that we all maintain our focus and, and decide as a group as to what our, um, what our focus is, because we can't afford both at this point. So, there's gonna be a hard decision to be made, and I don't wanna spend money, you know, doing a redesign of the pods when in fact, we're, we're thinking we wanna do the We're we're thinking we want to do the HVAC throughout the building.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Perry. And I think that we are following the script. For what we had set out to do in pre ref. So I, you know, I think with what we've laid out, we're we're still in. In line with what we had expected to try to accomplish initially. But now with budget issues, you know, having to look at the rest of FDR mechanical and some of that will probably have to go away.
Thanks.
So. Can I just recap? So the pods will have hydronic heat. And that will all change over and the rest of the school will have. The the current system, which is. What steam, I guess, right?
So Doug.
Just to be clear, we're we're going to move forward with design of the systems to replace all the systems that we can. And as Tom had outlined before, we're going to develop a series of alternates. So we will bid it. We just may not get everything that we are hoping to get because of the remaining dollars.
So yes, very potentially you'll have a steam system and a hot water system.
That's right.
And. I guess. Is it cheaper to do it all at once or? Are you gonna? Is it gonna cost more as we do it piece by piece? I guess I want to know that.
The way that building is set up, it probably shouldn't make much of a difference because you have two separate boiler rooms.
Okay.
There's two boiler rooms. One feeds the pods and one feeds the main building. The idea is that the way they're going to group it with alternates is that potentially we could put a heat exchanger in. The one from Havland. And do zones at a time. So any heat that's. Any any units that are replaced or heating units that are replaced in in an alternate will now be on a hydronic system. Although some of the school may still be on a steam system.
Yeah, that's and that's a good point. The. The heat exchanger over at Havland, we put that in. When we did the boiler project, that's a. All day, that's, you know, a fifty to seventy five thousand dollar heat heat exchanger. So it's great that we can repurpose that. For phasing or for, you know, when we look at how we're going to do the next project at FDR. We should look at that and it's savings.
It gives you the ability to upgrade certain parts of the building and still keep the boiler plant as steam. And not touch the rest of the building, so.
There any any other questions? Nope.
Good.
Hey, thanks, Elliot. Thanks, Dan and Zach from TS Arch and Tom and Lou.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is the budget update from Assistant Superintendent Linda Steinberg.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Like I did last time, I think I'm going to take over presenting, Rick, if you don't mind, so that I can scroll through. I'm gonna do that now. Bear with me. Okay, I'm wondering if everyone can see the presentation? You see that on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we don't have a lot of new information from the last meeting. But I will go over the new information that we do have. And just give the board an update on where we are right now with the budget and what we're doing. To prepare for any news that we'll receive about this state aid. So this slide here is similar to the one that I presented on April sixteenth. I had added some new comments and they're in the blue text. A lot of questions regarding state aid for two thousand twenty twenty one and how that will affect Hyde Park School District. The budget isn't completed yet because we don't have all of the information that we need. And what we do know is that there will be no increase in foundation aid from two thousand nineteen twenty. I did talk about that at the last meeting. For us, the effect was just over $200,000 for that. And to make up for it, we removed the lockers from the budget and pushed that off to the next year. We do know that the governor and the budget director from New York State have stated that local governments, which includes school districts. Could experience a 20% reduction in aid if the state doesn't receive more aid from the federal government. The reason is that the state is facing a three a thirteen point three billion dollar revenue shortfall in two thousand twenty twenty one. And over the next four years, a sixty one billion dollar revenue decline from previous projections. So, you know, this isn't a situation that may be just one year. We could be looking at a multi multi year issue with the state aid. So for Hyde Park School District, a 20% reduction in foundation aid would be 3.8 million dollars. I do have another slide showing some state aid. But I also want to say that a 20% reduction in overall aid would be six and a half million dollars. We're not sure yet of when they refer to the 20% reduction in aid, if they're referring to just foundation aid or all of the aids. I had originally assumed that it would only be in foundation aid because that's the only aid that's unrestricted. All of the other aids are basically based on expenses that we have. However, there was a article from the New York State School Boards Association. That talked about a potential decrease in aid of five and a half billion dollars statewide. And five and a half billion dollars. For the whole state is a 20% of the total aid that the state has enacted in their their most recent. Or in this year's budget. So we have to just be aware that when they talk about 20% reduction in state aid. It could be up to six and a half million dollars for Hyde Park. There are other things that were part of the state aid budget I did or the state's budget. I did talk last time about the change in the sharing of the maintenance costs for residentially placed students. In the last presentation, I thought that we could see potentially an increase of $300,000 from the original preliminary budget. But we now know that that budget impact is less than $100,000. Also, the state is using some Federal Cares Act money to cover some of their costs. There will be an application process to access those funds and we will probably have to account. For them separately than we do for other things in the general fund. We don't have the details yet on how to apply for the money or how we are expected to account for it. That method is being developed currently by the state. The state is also authorized, the budget director, to evaluate state revenues and spending throughout the year at fixed measurement periods. On the state may adjust state aid, including school aid in order to balance their budget. The first measurement period was April two thousand twenty. It ended today. The governor has stated that large cuts should be expected. And the budget director has stated that school districts should hold off on finalizing their budgets until at least May fifteenth. Because that's how long it'll take for them to analyze everything and to make the recommendations to the state legislature. So I think I had said last time that we should wait until after today to finalize the budget. But now we're going to wait until we find out how state aid will be affected based on April two thousand twenty. So here we can see that the state aid for two thousand twenty twenty one is provided in the state's enacted budget. Again, both the governor and the budget director have stated that local governments could experience a 20% reduction in state aid. As I already said, I'm hoping that this just means foundation aid, but I want the board. To be aware of what it would mean if it was a 20% reduction in total aid for us. So on the first line, that's foundation aid. That's the aid that's unrestricted. A 20% reduction to Hyde Park would be 3.8 million. So the reduction, potential reduction amounts are shown here in this column. I'm assuming you can see my cursor too. And the bottom number is the total state aid that we are expecting to receive and a 20% reduction. And that would be six and a half million. Over on the right side of the screen, I'm showing the state aid of school or state. The statewide school aid, excuse me, and what a 20% reduction would be. As you can see, the five and a half billion dollars that the School Boards Association referred to is 20% of the total. Enacted statewide school aid. Unfortunately, we simply don't have enough information at this time to finalize the budget. There are a lot of questions that I have. One of the things I wonder is if the 20% reduction would mean a straight 20% reduction for every school district. Or if the state would try to distribute that reduction more equitably. So that the schools that are needier would have less of a reduction in the schools that are more able to take the impact would have a higher. Reduction. I'm not really sure yet what that means for us. It's just something that I've I've thought about. But for now, we're. We're planning the budget as we with the information we have now, but we're also looking at. What everything costs so that if we do have to take more out of our budget, we'll be prepared to know what what things cost and what we'll need to talk about. Also, many of our aids are expense based, meaning we don't get the aid unless we spend the money. And we are saving some money right now, and I have a little bit about that later on in the presentation. But I do expect that before we finalize the budget, that I may decrease some of our expected aids because we are spending less now. I don't want to overestimate our aid for next year if we may never receive that aid. So for example, we have in in this line here that says expense based in other aids. We have our BOSI's aid, our transportation aid and our special education aids. So all of those are driven by what we spend. We use money in the current year that we received and aid that we received in the current year for prior year's expenses to help pay for the current year expenses. So if we have a reduction in our expenses this year, we'll receive less aid next year. So we'll have less aid to help for a next year's costs. I hope that makes sense. If we do lower that expense based aid based on additional money that we'll have at the end of the year. I expect that we'll make up for it by having more appropriated to next year. Like I said, I do have a few other slides about that. I'm going to move on. So this slide is the same one I showed last time. I just want to go over it again because the dollar amount did change. At the last meeting, I stated that because of the changes in maintenance costs sharing for residentially placed students. Hyde Park would need to increase the preliminary budget about $300,000. However, however, after reviewing this information with the Special Education Department. It seems that a budget of 721,900 is sufficient for maintenance costs. So the effect on our budget is just under $97,000. Just to review these changes again. Traditionally, the maintenance costs are shared by the school district, county and state. The school district share has always been thirty eight point four two four percent. The county pays forty three point one five two percent and the state has traditionally paid eighteen point four two four percent. For two thousand twenty twenty one, the state budget shifts their their share to school districts. The county will still pay forty three point one five two percent of maintenance costs, but the school district has to pay fifty six point eight four eight percent. We're hoping that this is for two thousand twenty twenty one only because that's all it's been enacted for. However, we don't know what will happen next year when they plan the two thousand twenty one twenty two budget. So as I stated earlier, we don't have all the information that is necessary to complete the budget at this time. But there are some items that we need to consider and we are considering. So they're listed here. There will be some unspent funds left over at year end because of the school closure. I did a review of payroll and I learned that we're going to save about $480,000 if we're closed through June thirtieth. Because of a reduction in substitute costs, a reduction in overtime, tutors, field trips and athletic trips. Also, as I already stated, I expect that we will receive less revenues next year for some expense based aids. So I will probably make an adjustment to our state aid for BOSI's transportation and special ed before we finalize the budget. A few people did ask me about the savings from supplies, from buying fewer supplies. I just want to say that our purchase order cutoff for two thousand nineteen twenty was March first. So a lot of the supplies for the rest of the school year were already purchased. I don't expect to see much of a reduction in things for supplies in the actual expense. But what I do expect is that in two thousand twenty twenty one, we won't be making as many purchases. Because we will have supplies that we can use next year that were purchased this year. And there is one significant item that I want to talk about. It's not currently reflected in the budget, but D HIC is potentially going to have a holiday. That's when we have one month where we don't have to pay an expense. It has to be approved by the trustees and that will be at their. There will be a vote at their June meeting. Normally, I wouldn't recommend that we consider the D HIC holiday in the budget for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's usually not determined until after the budget is voted. However, it seems like that may be determined before the budget vote this year. But secondly, I'm always concerned about pushing off a problem to the year after. If we remove 1.5 million dollars in expenses for health insurance in two thousand twenty twenty one. That's about eight percent of the cost because it would be one month, one twelfth. And in the year following, if there is no D HIC holiday, we would have to add that back to the expense. And that would be on top of whatever that year's health insurance rate increases. So for example, if in two thousand twenty one twenty two, there is no a D HIC holiday. And let's say the average rate increase was four percent. Hyde Park would actually be faced with an eight percent increase in health or a 12% increase in health insurance. Because we'd have to add that to the eight percent that we need to also add back. So before we use that D HIC holiday for two thousand twenty twenty one. Well, for so we have to make sure that it is approved by D HIC. But secondly, we just need to realize that it could cause some problems for us in the year after. I know I talked about the reduction earlier, but I do want to get back to that. A 20% reduction in foundation aid would be 3.8 million. I think that would be devastating. But I think we could manage it. A 20% reduction in total state aid is six and a half million dollars. And we would have to make a lot of changes, a lot of serious changes in order to balance a budget with a with a cut that large. We are considering next year reducing. We definitely will be reducing budgets for overtime conferences and equipment. We know that's something that we can live with and we can. That from the budget without hurting any program. But we're also considering cuts to all non mandated items if state aid is reduced again. Like I said, we don't have that in our budget yet, but we are currently gathering information and and costing out all that information. So we have it readily available once we know what kind of cuts we'll be facing. So I wanted to go over the fund balance and the reserves with the board. Because one of the options that we have if we face a large cut in state aid. Is to apply more fund balance to two thousand twenty twenty one than we are currently planning to appropriate. This table shows the projected amounts for total fund balance at June thirtieth. It's 21.6 million. It's on the last line. This information will change slightly. Just so you know, there will be interest income that we have to add to these amounts. We allocate the interest for the reserves altogether at the end of the year. And there will also be changes to the tax assurary reserve because we. Use money from that reserve as we have judgments that come due. And we also are able to add money to the reserves as we receive claims or notices of claims from Duchess County. Anyway, right now, considering the cost of savings from payroll that I discussed earlier, the 480,000. I expect that unless we add to reserves or appropriate more fund balance. Our unassigned fund balance would be more than four percent that we and that's four percent is the amount that we're legally allowed to keep. I wouldn't recommend that we exceed the four percent. And we would have to do something with that money, but I expect that we would need to appropriate it to two thousand twenty twenty one. But by my projections now, we'll have an additional $443,000 to appropriate to next year. I did highlight the unassigned fund balance line a little bit darker. That's the top line. And also the amount that's appropriated to twenty twenty one is a darker color too. That 3.1 million in the fund balance appropriation, that's what's in the budget right now. And like I said earlier, I certainly expect that to change. I expect us to appropriate more. I just want the board to know that non spendable fund balance on the second line. That's exactly what it means. You don't have the option of using that. That's non spendable. It's basically for prepaid. It's basically for uh prepaid expenses that we pay in nineteen twenty for twenty twenty one costs. For us, that's usually just our health insurance. Um, our health insurance for July will be due on June twentieth, and we have to ensure that we have the fund balance to cover that in the next year. All the other um items listed here are reserves. Um, we can use some of them to help with the budget issues. Uh, please just remember that once we use a reserve, the money is gone. Um, now that we're living with the tax cap each year, and we're constrained by that, we have very little options for uh re- replenishing our reserves. So, once we use our fund balance, it's gone. It would probably take a very long time to get it back, and the board um just needs to be aware of that. Um, the reserve funds from the unemployment reserve can be used to offset unemployment expenses. We typically uh budget about twenty five thousand dollars a year for unemployment expenses, although we haven't um had that much um in recent years. However, the last few weeks, we've been receiving a lot of notices from New York State that our subs and our tutors are applying for unemployment. In a typical year, they wouldn't be eligible to receive unemployment. But I'm thinking that uh because of the current issue, that New York State is going to allow them to receive unemployment benefits. That'll affect our next couple of quarters for our um the bills that we pay. We're a direct payer, so we pay exactly what our uh claims are against us. And uh depending on how the budget shakes out, we may have more unemployment claims next year, too. But we do have the option of using some of that reserve to help offs- offset those costs. The next reserve are the retirement contribution reserves. We actually have two retirement reserve uh contribution reserves. We have one for ERS, and we have one for TRS. You may remember that last year was the first year that we were allowed to reserve for TRS uh cost. And TRS is the Teachers Retirement System, and we have four hundred thousand dollars in that reserve, and the rest of the reserve is for ERS. One of our biggest costs is the cost that we pay to the pension system for our active employees. So we can use some of that money to offset that expense to bring down our total budget if we need to. Um, like I said just a little while ago, the tax cert reserve is just to pay the judge judgments that we receive. So that wouldn't help us necessarily with the budget unless we decided to have less reserved. Um, we can reserve up to a hundred percent of the claims, and we typically uh budget for eighty percent of the claims, um, knowing that the courts wouldn't approve everything that or the full amount that people are asking for. But um, we would have to look at that if we wanna consider uh reducing the tax cert reserves to help balance the budget. The employee benefit accrued liability reserve, that's for compensated absences, which is basically vacation and sick time payout. Um, some of our employees have the option of buying back or actually really selling back their vacation days to the district. And some retirees have the option of getting paid out for um vacation or for sick time when they retire. Um, currently, we budget for most of that. For retirees, we always budget three hundred fifty thousand, and anything that's in excess of that, we take it from the reserve. But we could lower our three hundred fifty thousand dollar budget and take more from the reserve if we had to. Um, and we've always budgeted for the amount of the vacation time payout, but we could budget less for that and take some from the reserve, too. Um, I don't think that the repair reserve or the capital expenditure reserve are options for us because the repair reserve is to be used for emergency repairs and must be repaid within two years. Um, the board actually has to declare an emergency, um, so I don't recommend doing that. Um, and the capital projects reserve, that's for actually cap, that's for capital projects that are voter approved, and the voters have to approve using the reserve, too. But just so the board knows, we do have an option to use some of the other reserves um or some of the fund balance, the unassigned fund balance. But just remember that whatever we use, um, it'll be gone, and we may not be able to recover that again, at least not for quite a while. But since we're talking about the fund balance, I I just wanted to remind everyone about the long-range financial projection. Um, in January of uh two thousand twenty, um Chuck Bastian from BPD, which is our financial advisor, was here. He presented information to the board regarding long-range planning. Um, he showed that our at our current pace, we may use all of our fund balance by the year twenty twenty five. Um, the best way to avoid that is to either increase revenues or decrease expenses. Most of our revenues are taxes or state aid, so we don't have an option to raise taxes by more than the tax cap. And we're experiencing state aid cuts, as you all know. Um, so we've been lucky in the past in that we've been able to find expenditure savings through retirement. However, if we start relying on our fund balance now to balance the budget or rely on more of the fund balance than we have, uh, we may be moving that fund balance uh depletion date up. Um, this slide here shows our current revenue budget for two thousand twenty one. Um, like I said, we're just using the information that we have now from state aid or from the state. The state aid number is what's enacted in the budget. Um, that's the number that the governor is saying we'll probably see decreases in. Um, so we we will make those changes once we know how much we how much of a uh cut we're looking at. But right now, our budget is a hundred and two point four eight million. Um, it's a budget increase of three point seven five million or three point seven nine percent from two thousand nineteen twenty. Um, if we experience another cut in state aid, our options would be only to either increase what we have appropriated to next year using fund balance or to cut our um expenses. Those are our two choices. So we'll have a lot of work to do within the next couple of weeks once we find out where state aid is. So here we have our current expenditures budget um for two thousand twenty one. Our budget must be balanced. Uh, that means the revenues have to match the expenses. So as you can see here, too, the expense budget is a hundred two point four eight million. It's a three point seven five million dollar increase or three point seven nine percent. This hasn't changed much from last time, so I I really won't go over the individual um categories at this time. The three budget components are program, administrative, and capital. Our budget is a eleven point three percent admin, thirteen point five percent capital, and seventy five point one percent program. Um, I'll say again, as I have in previous presentations, that our admin portion is typically less than ten percent. However, the BOSI's capital project, which is one point five six million dollars for us, is included in the administrative portion. Um, if it wasn't for that, we would be less than ten percent. Um, even though it's a BOSI's, it's a capital project for BOSI's. New York State says for school districts, that's an administrative cost. It's only a capital cost for the BOSI's themselves. I I don't have a lot of changes in the slides for additions and savings, but I will go over them again. Um, we plan to hire a deputy tax clerk so that more than one person will be authorized to collect from taxpayers. Um, I'm hoping this will increase customer service, and it'll give us an opportunity to have more than one person know the job. Um, we're adding two part-time school monitors and a girls' uh varsity golf coach. Um, we took out the lockers for the FDR pods. Um, that was to help fray uh to fray the um the additional expenses or the additional um I'm sorry, that that was to help um alleviate the foundation cut that we've already experienced because foundation aid is the same as it was um the current year. Um, we have to add that to the two thousand twenty one twenty two school year. And um, in that year, we'll actually have an expense of three hundred and ninety two thousand for lockers because we plan to buy sixty percent of them in twenty twenty one and the rest in twenty one twenty two. Um, we have five students that are currently in district, and they'll be placed out of district. Our estimates for the tuition cost for them is three hundred thousand dollars. Some of that cost is offset by reductions in one-to-one aids, and that information is on the next page. In two thousand nineteen twenty, we hired a nurse um for a particular student's need, and that nurse will be needed again for twenty twenty one. Even though that nurse is currently on staff, it uh the budget wasn't included in two thousand nineteen twenty because we hired that person after the budget vote. Uh, so we're now, so it is in our budget for twenty twenty one. Uh, we have a vacancy of a full-time equivalent account clerk, and we won't fill that. Um, instead, we're using BOSI's uh shared service to assist with the payroll function. The net savings for that is forty six thousand one hundred eighty three dollars. In two thousand nineteen twenty, we hired three new mental health professionals. They're currently being paid from a federal grant, but we must move their expenses to the general fund next year uh with benefits that cost is three hundred six thousand five hundred sixty seven. Um, also, based on student need, we're reducing our one-to-one student aids by seven full-time equivalents. Uh, three of those aids are associated with the students that will be placed out of district. Um, also, based on need, there'll be a reduction of nine and a half full-time equivalent teaching assistants. The cost savings includes benefits and is three hundred forty three thousand three hundred ninety six dollars. Um, we added an elementary teacher due to class size in two thousand nineteen twenty, and that change also came after the budget was implemented. Uh, the increase, however, to the budget is offset by a retirement at the end of the school year. Um, and the information on the retirements is is coming up next. So we have eleven teachers retiring, and we plan to replace eight of them. Um, we won't be hiring a social studies teacher, a math teacher, or an elementary teacher. Um, additionally, we're reducing the budget by a point eight full-time equivalent technology integrator and a full-time equivalent reading teacher. Uh, we had previously included in the reduction a one uh point oh, so one full-time equivalent health teacher, but that's now on hold. Our original plan was to reduce a health teacher and move that person to a physical education teacher position that'll be vacant due to her retirement. It's on hold, however, because of um um an issue that we learned about seniority. Um, the total changes to our budget from two thousand nineteen twenty to from two thousand nineteen twenty to twenty twenty one is a total savings of seven hundred twelve thousand two hundred ninety dollars. Um, remember earlier when I uh discussed that the long-range plan and the fund balanced depletion by twenty twenty five has usually offset, and we keep pushing that financial cliff off um because of savings. Um, this is one way that we do that every year. Uh, the first time we had that uh long-range plan, our financial cliff was coming in two thousand twenty three, so we were able to push it off by two years and just a matter of two years. Um, I am considered now, however, because of the reductions in state aid, I'm worried that that two thousand twenty five date will come closer to us instead of being pushed out farther. So, um, originally, we should have already adopted the budget if everything um was normal. Um, we would have done that at the last meeting, and tonight would have been a presentation just on the actual adopted budget. Um, unfortunately, we don't know yet when we can have the budget vote. The governor postponed it till June first or later. Um, we will update everyone as soon as we know when that budget vote will be. Um, we will still have to um have the board adopt the budget. Um, we'll have to post legal notices. We'll need to reschedule a budget hearing. Um, there's there's a property tax report card that has to be adopted by the budget, and all of those due dates are driven by the date of the school uh budget vote. Because the budget director is recommending now that we wait until May fifteenth to adopt the budget, um, I am concerned that we might not have a lot of time to put together a final budget before it's time to adopt it. Um, that's one of the reasons why we're now looking at the cost for everything so that it'll be easy for us to make the uh decisions because we'll know how much they'll cost when it comes to that time. So I don't have anything else right now, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Oh, Linda Doug.
Go ahead, Doug.
I I just wanna say this is the best budget presentation I've heard since I've been on the board. It's thorough. You gave the reasoning behind everything. Uh, I I just wanna say, great job.
Thank you.
So Linda, we do need to pass our budget before the end of June, though. Correct?
Well, because our our new our fiscal year, yeah, that's a great point, Jeff. Our fiscal year starts July first. So we won't have a budget if we don't have a a budget passed by then. Um, and the only information that we've been given is that the budget vote has been postponed until act till June first or later. I think I wrote on here, yeah, I wrote on this slide until after June first, but it's actually June first or later. And we haven't received that information yet. Every time I hear the governor speak, I hope he's going to mention that, but he hasn't yet. And and perhaps the state is waiting, too, until we until they know about our state aid on May fifteenth.
Then we are looking closely if we have to do it by a write-in ballot or anything?
Um, I don't know about that either. I know a lot of people have asked the question. Some school districts were wondering if the uh budget vote might be uh forgotten altogether if school districts stayed within the tax cap. Um, we are in the tax cap. However, I've heard the governor say twice that he's not going to circumvent the de- democratic process. So I'm not sure if we are able to have a budget vote, if we'll still um if people will be able to do that in person or if we'll be allowed to um take more absentee ballots or if people um will be allowed to vote in other ways. Okay, so we don't have any information about that yet.
Any other questions?
Um, I have a I have some questions. I'm just, you know, really nervous about the, you know, the long-term projections.
Yeah.
And, you know, and stuff, so, um, you know, what are some of the safeguards that we can do other than, I mean, we can increase revenue? I mean, we can cut expenses. I mean, that that's those are literally our only options. I mean, it's I I I sound simple. I'm sure that is what the option is, but.
Yeah, the the options are to increase, yeah, to increase revenues or decrease expenses. The only way we could increase revenues would be to increase the tax levy. But remember, right now, we're at the maximum amount that we're allowed to levy under the tax cap. Um, in order to uh pierce the tax cap, we would need a sixty percent of the voters approve that. And I'm just not sure um if that would if that's something that would pass, especially with the current state of the economy. I know that typically budgets don't pass that are um that are over the over the cap. It's not usual for a a district that pierces the cap to have their budget approved.
I guess I I just have a question is is how has our fund balance built in the past at all? I mean, with with our budget, I mean, is it just how how what feeds into the fund balance?
Well, fund balance is created when we have more revenues during the year than expenses. So
So if there's anything left over at the budget, then it goes into the fund balance.
Exactly. And there was, I mean, Hyde Park had hardly any fund balance. Um, and then over, you know, quite a few years, it was built up, um, maybe twenty years by now since it's been building, but it slowed. The fund balance um increases have slowed down since the tax cap has been enacted. And there have been a couple of years since the tax cap enact was enacted that we actually spent a little more than we received. So our fund balance decreased a little bit from year to year.
Alright, thanks for just clarifying that.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move on to board discussion. Uh, I do wanna point out that Rick has put the town of Hyde Park video is on the front page of the district website right now. So you don't have to go to the town. You can go right to the district's webpage to view that that was talked about in Pride. Um, we're gonna go on to where we hear from the public. Um, as people shouldn't be aware that we are now, um, since we are now doing virtually, we cannot do our public participation as we used to. So we ask people if you wish to talk to the board. We ask you not to send them to the board members, but send it to the district clerk. Um, she will gather them together. We ask that any questions come to the board be done up by the five P M. of the previous day. So I mean, like, all letters that came to the board had to come in by yesterday at the close of business. Um, we will read then read these letters to the uh to the public, and we after we're done reading the letters, we'll discuss them. Okay, three letters we're not gonna read tonight. The one came from the Hyde Park Central School District Health Department. One came from Sue Sarulee, and one came for illness. Sanford, those questions were on the health teacher, and as you know, we have put that on hold. Um, so So we will keep these letters and if we, where we decide we'll have to read them. If that's decision came back to cut that position. The, let me get back to my letters.
Jeff, I just would like to, to mention that those letters that we're not reading solely talked about that position. Some of the letters we're reading today also talk about some other things. So, so everybody will hear something that has to do with the, the health instruction position.
Thank you, Denise. So our first letter is from Mike Dooley. Reads, hello, can you please speak to why Hyde Park is not using Zoom meetings or similar tools for interaction between students and the teachers? Our neighbors in Specking Hill, Wappingers, and Arlington are doing Zoom meetings with their classes on a scheduled basis and their students are very engaged with it. Secondly, can you speak to the district's ability to promote consistency among classes and grades? It seems as though every class is doing things differently and it is extremely cumbersome for those children in multiple grades. There are multiple apps to download, many of which don't work, and several Google classrooms per child. Realistically, there are not enough hours in the day to be fourteen teachers to my children. Also, when parents are told to contact other parents for assistance because staff is overwhelmed is not an acceptable answer. I don't like to be, I don't like to present a problem without a potential solution. Perhaps we could look to spend a weekly assignment on Monday mornings due by Sunday that week. That will allow parents to complete the work with their children at their own pace. We're getting notifications on our phones after midnight on weekends or weeknights that assignments are being posted. If the goal is to continue education at the lowest stress level possible, I think we need to address the stress, stress level piece specifically. I thank the teachers for all their doing. They're absolutely dedicated. But we need consistency and to work together to make this successful. We won't be back at school this year. We likely won't be back at school this fall. We have the opportunity to ensure this online learning is successful now. I would ask a district wide initiative to be standard, to standardize how this learning is rolled out. Saying that learning is on Google Classroom is standardized is not enough. We need the format of the learning to be standardized. No more apps, no more midnight assignments. Let's fix this now for the long haul. I believe I'm not the only one with these thoughts. Thank you.
Our next letter is from Laura Collins. Good evening. I want to express my concern in regards to cutting the district K through five health teacher position as well as the nine classroom assisted positions. I acknowledge that we only have so much in the budget as a public school, but we can, but, excuse me. But can we return to the drawing board to explore where to reallocate the funds to secure these positions for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year? Whether we return to school this spring or not, we can't even begin to understand what we will be coming back to in the fall. The emotional trauma will be real and we will need every qualified adult possible as part of the team. As our cherished students return, we will see the fallout of additional unemployment, increased homelessness, and emotional trauma. It will be our reality. Academically, the predictions and the educational research are sobering. Assistant support makes academic intervention services viable. Even if the nine physicians aren't those A I S positions in the shuffle of employees in the shuffle of employees will certainly impact direct student instruction. Our health program must be preserved. Social workers and nurses will be inundated with the unprecedented need we will face. We can't spread them any thinner to teach the essential health classes designed to support students through just this type of occurrence. The health teachers trained for this. We need these positions. They will be essential to student success in every level and to the overall quality of the good work we do in the Hyde Park District. Please don't make these cuts. The next email is from, Ed will read that. Ed, you're on mute if you're talking.
Okay, let's try that again. Sorry, guys. So this one comes from Rachel Bruno. She states, in response to live streaming for classes for Hyde Park students, I would like the recommendation to be put forth to individual teachers as an option for student participation. I oppose vehemently to mandating live streaming as any sort of evaluation tool, even as a basis for participation grade. Teachers and families are already putting in meaningful time into their children's education. They're doing the best they can, given the many variables and the challenges they are facing. Limited resources, accessibility and time factors vary too greatly from family to family to make this mandatory. I implore the district and board to take this into consideration while discussing live streaming. Thank you for your service and consideration.
The next email is from Doug.
This is from the sixth grade teams, basically from the CIA, Marist, and Basterd. Dear members of the board, we are writing as the sixth grade staff to ask about a recent budgetary decision that impacts our students. The reduction of a reading A I S teacher and the continued sharing of another will have severe consequences for our students. The ability of our students to meet in small groups with reading specialists is the best chance for our struggling readers to make gains. As we work with students in the virtual world, it becomes even more obvious that students who will qualify for these A I S services do not have the ability to successfully complete assignments independently. This means that without continued small groups instruction, these students will move forward into an uncertain future in which work will become increasingly frustrating and inaccessible. Reading skills are necessary for success in every discipline. Keeping our reading A I S program intact to allow for individualized remediation and continuing our reading class will allow students the best opportunity to close reading gaps. We understand that there are plans to incorporate a computer based reading program to supplement our reading class. This is for all students. However, there are students who read below grade level that are in need of reading A I S teachers from whom they can get additional support. Those teachers are able to provide direct and explicit instructions that is differentiated for each individual student. This is something that cannot take place on a computer program nor in a regular class setting that is meant for developmental reading and not for remediation. During these unprecedented times, we are learning that digital learning cannot replace face to face learning. Sixth grade is a crucial year for students. We can make decisions now that will allow them to move through middle school with the skills they need for success. Making cuts to and changing the reading A I S program is a decision that we hope will be reevaluated immediately. Each year, the students are coming to sixth grade with greater reading deficits and it is very concerning. We know that the needs of our students are greater than they've ever been. Can the district share with us the data that was used to determine that the middle school doesn't need the A I S reading staff it currently has, respectively, the sixth grade teams?
The next email is read by Mike.
Okay, I have to go off a mute. So this one is from Jean Gross. As a firsthand observer in my position as a teacher's aide in Hyde Park Central School District Elementary Classrooms over the past twelve years, I cannot adequately, adequately convey the engagement that I have witnessed when Gretchen Muir Dietrich comes in for our six weeks of health education. The students are excited, actively listening, openly eager to participate and ask questions and are always coming away with valuable lessons from her teaching. I do not believe it benefits our students or our classroom teachers and school nurses whatsoever to eliminate this separate and valuable teacher's position from their school schedule. I cannot fathom how our classroom teachers or our incredibly busy school nurses would be able to manage adding health ed to their already packed schedules and daily services. Our health educators are needed at all grade levels. In addition to the above mentioned cuts, the elimination of any teaching assistance at this unprecedented time in our history where students' social, emotional, academic health is being stretched to a degree never seen before would be devastating, both to our students and the teachers they assist. The support they offer is going to be needed more than ever as we move forward from this wretched virus and the havoc it has wreaked on so many levels. Please consider this as you navigate through your budget decisions. Thank you for your time, Jean Gross.
And the last email is read by Carl.
Yep. This is from Tracy Farrell. Respectfully, the N W E A has stated that students will be at risk of significant loss in reading gains and math skills due to the crisis we are experiencing. Digital learning is no comparison for face to face teaching. Add to that the social and emotional crisis many students are suffering without the support systems they had access to at school. Moving into a new school year after such turmoil will require a greater need for support staff to help teachers, social workers, and school psychologists work with the students. Why are we cutting T A aides health positions when we don't know what we are facing regardless of the movement of the behavioral program to B O C's? Isn't there a more creative way to cut spending than taking needed support from our students? We have done so in the past. Thank you.
Okay, so let's talk. Let's talk at the one letter on the Zoom classroom. I'm curious for what we're looking at in the future. If this continues longer, we do understand, I, I do understand the students. Excuse me? Okay, I understand that. Okay, I understand students. I mean, we all learn differently and one way communication is just like reading a book. And I think maybe in the future, if this is going to continue, we're going to have to look at some changes on how delivery is done and interactive classrooms is going to have to come about because that is way, in a lot of classrooms, it's very interactive. How that looks, I don't know. How is it going to do it? I don't know. But if this continues long range, I think we're probably going to have to look at something.
So Mr. Danielson, this is Mr. Spence. I would just jump in and say, you know, it is a challenge. We're trying to balance data security. Zoom was asked specifically in the question by the parent. Now Zoom has some data breaches and we don't want to put our students in a position where their data might be hacked. There's something called Zoom bombing where some conferences down in Westchester have actually been interrupted and the data has been lost. So we're trying to balance both security and, you know, ease of use. I, I would just say, as, you know, former teacher and administrator, we're also trying to understand that right now this is asynchronous learning. So different teachers have different techniques to use. But as you said, in the future, you know, we will be using different tools at different times.
This is Doug Heder. I, I think there are some legal concerns as well to entering a home digital digitally and privacy concerns, both for the teacher and the student. So there's a lot that's going to have to be worked out and some people are not going to be happy with the invasion of privacy in their homes. So I don't know how this is going to work out.
Yeah, but we know our students are starting to, we're having a lot more difficulty getting assignments in. At least I've heard that from others. You even heard the mayor from New York City who says they're struggling there with the kids not even responding. I know we've heard some kids aren't responding right now within our own district. So we're, I mean, this is what we have for now. I'm just saying in the future, we're going to have to take a hard look at this or figure out how we do this if this continues.
And this is Aviva Kafka. I just wanted to say that we may get news tomorrow, but as of now, we're expected to return to school after May fifteenth. We have taken a careful approach with online learning in order to protect student and staff privacy. We also have wanted to take the time to ensure that all students have access to the curriculum that we're offering. And we're looking at ways to safely move forward. So we are starting to look at what some synchronous connections for, between students and teachers might be as we hear about possible continued or additional school closures moving forward. We recognize we have many students in very challenging situations right now. Some are caring for family members with COVID, taking care of their siblings, working outside the home to support the family income, sharing one device among many people in the home and struggling with significant mental or physical health issues, some due to the pandemic and some preexisting. And our teachers are also managing some very challenging situations during this time as well. So at the same time, we know many of our students are ready and able and willing to participate in more synchronous connections, like some of the people that wrote in for tonight. So we're moving forward with all of this in mind. So I want to thank the people who've reached out with their feedback as we continue to chart our course. We are talking about this all the time.
Now, Aviva, is there is some synchronous of special needs?
Yeah, we actually are providing all of the mandatory related services synchronously individually. And we do have, you know, legal sign offs in place for all of those, but they are also one on one. They are not, so the, the privacy issue between and among students, you know, is not, is not there. So those are going on and they're very successful. We're also holding the annual reviews for the Committee on Special Education virtually.
Okay. We already understood the mandate of the A I S cut. There was a comment in there that says we're increasingly greater reading deficits coming into the sixth grade. Is that a problem we are having in, in the district that it's, our reading levels getting worse? And is that necessarily a sixth grade problem, but overall to the elementary?
Yeah, that we are going to continue to monitor the academic intervention services data that we have, that we currently have. But we also see the need to assess all students in the fall as early as possible to determine the instructional needs. Because we just don't know how much different students are regressed during this period. So we're concerned about that and we're going to need to reassess everyone in the fall regardless.
So is there any other comments on any of the other letters? So hearing none. We'll move on to any board discussion. I do not know of any that we have. Okay, board subcommittee reports. The special ed committee did meet virtually. We will give the board a heads up that even though they, they're hoping they will complete all their evaluations on time, it is a lot more difficult in this virtual world and they're trying, but there is a good possibility that we may have to pay for evaluation to continue on into the summer. And they're trying, but there is a good possibility that we may have to pay for evaluation to continue on into the summer. And we are having some placement issues without a um out of district placement and getting their needs and getting that information back that they are working out. But from what we hear, the secretaries and the special ed department is very much overwhelmed and working really hard on this. They are looking, their district will be probably providing help from other areas to help them out. Is there anything I missed on that, Carl?
No, I think it's good, just in the the um one thing is that the there's just a tremendous increase in the amount of of paper that has to be mailed out to people and just the additional work that's kind of slowing things down. I think the the entire staff in the special education department is is doing a tremendous job and just keeping their head above water.
Is there any other subcommittee reports?
Uh, I, it's not actually a report, but maybe more of an advertisement. The Dutchess County School Board Association meeting will be uh next Thursday. Uh, it it will be a virtual meeting. Uh, and to continue with our theme of sustainability, we're going to be having a presentation um by the Red Hook Central School District uh elementary school garden teacher. Uh, they have a pretty extensive composting program that that she's gonna be reporting on. Um, and I think that all will be welcome. I think you, I think that I think generally the uh it goes out. Um, you know, everybody gets notice of those meetings. I mean, every board member is welcome to the meeting and uh being virtual, maybe it'll even be easier. So um look for it in your email um coming in the in the coming week.
Um, I'd like to mention too that the person, not the personnel, the policy committee met virtually. So we're still going through policies and updating them. So you'll be seeing some, you know, them for um consideration in future meetings.
Any other committee reports? So hearing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
They'll move.
Second by Perry.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a unanimous vote for the consent agenda. Onto new business, can I have a motion for special education placements?
So moved, Carl.
Second, Mike.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 We have a unanimous vote for education placements. Can I have a motion for ten point two, change order N P E E C dash oh one?
So moved, Mike.
Second, Doug.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote for ten point two. Can I go move, have a motion for ten point three memorandum of agreement with the Hyde H P U E A?
So moved. Or second, Doug.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Jeff, this is Greer. Um, there was some question about whether or not those the M O As needed to be signed before the board voted. Um, consider them signed uh by me. Again, a lot of leeway here with electronic signatures or verbal uh agreements. So I just did wanna say publicly that that is not an issue.
Any other discussion? So proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 We have a unanimous vote for ten point three. There is no other matters deemed necessary by the board. There is no need for a second exec executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Perry.
Vote by Perry.
Second by Doug.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Is there any abstentions? Hearing none, is there any no votes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a unanimous vote to adjourn. Thank you all for participating. Good night, guys. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, everybody. Good night.
Hi, thank you. Good to see you, Rachel.
No, it's good to see you.